Is she, no one is at? She's at the city, the city party. This is like, no one's here.
What did they have?
What an awkward time, huh? Loft.
Your loft, oh, okay. No one's there, really?
No, I'm, well, it could be. But tomorrow's the jingle mingling. I'm gonna do that and you're coming in, right?
Yeah.
You go to that? What time do you think you're gonna head over to the job? What's, what's your schedule?
Uh, are you, are you coming in? Officer?
I would love just to be able to go work out. Come pick me up? Come get you?
She has the car, I know.
Yeah, I can do that, that'd be great. So let's, what would be best for you?
All right. We'll start like at five thirty. Well, it starts at five.
I can go at five thirty.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think Gloria will get down at six.
That's a pretty big one, isn't it? Didn't keep Molly as a...
Yeah, that was down.
The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, December 7th, 2021, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, which will be given this evening by Diane Bennett from the Granger Community Church.
Aye. We are the United States of America, and to your honor, for which this stands as one nation, in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Will you pray with me? Creator of all that exists, when we look at the night sky and see the work of your fingers, the moon and the stars that you set in place, what are mere mortals that you should think about us, human beings that you should care for us? Oh, Lord, our Lord, your majestic name fills the earth. This particular day in history commemorates the 80th anniversary of men and women whose lives were lost at Pearl Harbor. We thank you for generations who have gone before us, sacrificing to uphold American ideals of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Your word tells us that if we need wisdom, we can ask you, generous God, and you will give it. Do not rebuke us for asking, Father. Make us sure that our faith is in you alone. Let us not waver with divided loyalty, but know that you, God, shall supply all we need according to your riches and glory. Tonight's agenda is filled with decisions to be made regarding petitions, communications, funding, ordinances, amendments, salaries, transferring monies and other fiscal matters, appropriations, numbers of employees, land use, and so much more. Please fill each person here with your Holy Spirit. Guide each speaker and decision-maker to peaceful discussion and God-honoring choices for everything covered here tonight. Bless the county auditor, the county commissioners, and the county special committee members, and every visitor here, and each of their loved ones for their service to our community. Help us in our weakness, Father. May your Holy Spirit pray for us tonight in harmony with your own will. What shall we say about such wonderful things as these? If you are for us, who can ever be against us? Since you did not spare even your own son, but gave him up for us all, won't you also give us everything else? So be glorified tonight. Call us by your name, that we may humble ourselves, pray, and seek your face, and turn from our own selfishness, that you might hear from heaven, forgive our sins, and restore our land. In your own majestic name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Next are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Krasinski.
President Morton, I'd like to make the following appointments. Raphael Morton to the St. Joseph County Airport Authority. Lee Slaventis to the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission. Adam Devon to Area Plan Commission. Jason Critchlow to the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission. Tom Kreip to the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission. Corey Nolan to the St. Joseph County Data Board IT Governance, Governance Board. David Strawn and Mark Bagwell to the Mishawaka-Penn Harris Public Library Board. And Larry Katanzerite to the St. Joseph County Parks Board.
Thank you, Mr. Krasinski. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Raphael Morton is appointed to the St. Joseph County Airport Authority. Lee Slavenskis is appointed to the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission. Adam Devon is appointed to the Area Plan Commission. Jason Critchlow is appointed to the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission. Thomas Greip is reappointed to the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission. Corey Nolan is reappointed to the St. Joseph County Data Board IT governance board. David Strawn and Mark Bagwell are reappointed to the Mishawaka-Penn Harris Public Library Board. And Larry Katanzerite is reappointed to the St. Joseph County Parks Board. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9th, 2021, public hearing? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the November 9th, 2021, public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners? No report. Report from any council special committee?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
MACOG has asked me to make an announcement tonight, so on behalf of MACOG, they'd like to announce that MACOG, in partnership with Transpo, is kicking off an 18-month study of the existing urban, interurban trolley and transpo bus system, and developing a 10-year plan for the future of transit in the region. Branded Connect, this regional transit plan will focus on understanding community and regional transit needs, consider a full redesign of regional transit network, and develop a 10-year plan for prioritizing a range of transit investments to improve mobility and access for residents, businesses, and visitors. The project website will launch soon at www.knettransitplan.com, and the first of three rounds of public engagement is scheduled to begin in mid-January. MACOG looks forward to engaging with the community and the entire region throughout this process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Root. Next on the agenda, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 14121?
14121. I was creating a new fund for the receipt of funding for the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council as authorized by the Indiana General Assembly in 2021, petitioner Prosecutor.
Bill Number 14121 is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill 14221, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, land use is Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended, for addressed and unaddressed property totaling 1.42 more or less acres, located at and abutting 12707 State Road 23 and 12685 State Road 23, from C Commercial District, site plan specific, and B Business District 2. C Commercial District, not site plan specific. Petitioner Johnny T LLC and Libra Poolus Real Estate Holdings LLC. Bill 14321, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, land use is Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended, for addressed and unaddressed property of 4.27 acres, parcels located at 54386 Palmer Street, across the street, and 80 feet south along Palmer Street, from our single-family district to you, University District. Petitioner, University of Notre Dame, Du Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Bill Number 142-21 and Bill Number 143-21 are both assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Next are salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 13121?
13121, in ordinance amending Ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, combined with Bill Number 13021L. Petitioner, Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. Amy Rupee, Administrator with the Department of Health, with offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the county city building. We are requesting to transfer funds from one personnel account to another to be able to bring on a part-time staff member for our COVID clinic.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 13121. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on 13121?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 13121 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 13121? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 131-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 13421.
In ordinance amending Ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, combined with Bill Number 13021A9. Petitioner, Adult Probation.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. Jesse Carlton, Chief Probation Officer with the St. Joseph County Adult Probation Department, offices located on the 4th floor of the county city building. This salary amendment is just to set the salaries in accordance with the state probation officer salary schedule to go along with a grant that we received from the Indiana Office of Court Services.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any questions from council? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 13421. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing on 13421 is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 13421 was made by Councilman Katanzerite. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 13421 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda?
13321?
Yes, Bill Number 13321.
In ordinance amending Ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, combined with Bills Number 13021A10. Petitioner, Portage Manor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir. Petitioner?
This is Patty Gottse. I'm president of the Portage Manor Board of Directors. This is increasing the pay for the director of Portage Manor and adding back the position of assistant director that was eliminated approximately two years ago. And it's a salary for just the end of the year. We'll be back next month to get this appropriated for all of next year.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill 13321. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing on 13321. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass. Bill Number 133-21 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 13321 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill Number 13221?
In ordinance amending Ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, combined with Bill Number 13021. Prosecutor is the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, I've got this table. I don't...
I think it's tabled. Are all three tabled, or just, there's three items? Just the first one?
13221.
13221 is tabled. Yeah, it's been tabled.
Okay.
December 21st. At the request, request the petitioner?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record show that Bill Number 132-21 was tabled at the request of the prosecutor's office. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 13521?
In ordinance amending Ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, combined with Bill Number 13021A11. Petitioner, prosecutor?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office. Office is on the 10th floor of this building. This is a one-year, $184,908 continuation grant for the Special Victims Unit. It will require a 25% match, which is included in the prosecutor's budget.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Thank you, sir. Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on 13521. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on 13521?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 13521 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion at this time? Hearing none. Mr. Hammond, please take the roll.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 13521 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill Number 136-21?
In ordinance amending Ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner, prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office. Office is on the 10th floor of this building. This is a one-year continuation grant totaling $469,133, which includes a $795, $7,095 emergency portion. The grant does not require matching funds.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on 13621. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 13621 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 13621 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Number 123-21 has been requested to return to committee by the petitioner. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our November 23rd, 2021, committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 130-21?
In ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purposes herein specified for the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill 130-21?
For approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass. Bill Number 130-21 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Um, before we pass this, do we need to amend it to exclude the tabled bills?
Mr. Triple?
We've never done that in past.
Okay, okay.
Any further comments on 130-21? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Uh, Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 130-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill Number 137-21?
13721? Excuse me. In ordinance amending Ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, Rental Assistance Fund, petitioner, auditor.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill 13721 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hammond?
Mike Hammond, St. Joseph County Auditor, with offices on the 2nd floor of this building. This is the salary component of the budget bill that you see below 14421 for that tranche of funds, ERA funds, 1.5 to 3.3 million dollars we got for emergency rental assistance.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the auditor? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 13721. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Doesn't anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed on 13721. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 13721 was made by Councilman Kenarecki. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments on this bill from any council member? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullioan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 137-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 14421?
In ordinance appropriating monies from the Rental Assistance Fund for the purposes herein specified for the department herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Petitioner?
What my remarks previously about Bill 13721 apply to 14421?
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council for Mr. Hammond? Hearing none. We'll now open the public hearing on 14421. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed.[1509.05] Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 14421?
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion to pass bill number 14421 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullion.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Let the record show that bill number 144-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 13921.
In order to amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, can I report, please, sir?
This comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ryan Hertz.
Good evening. Bob Linterz, Health Officer, St. Joseph County Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floors. This is a request from the Health Department for a data analyst to help us with the implementation of the Behavioral Crisis Facility as proposed in the following bill. Specifically, the job at the Health Department, as I think you are all well aware, is over the last several months to convene the group of institutions, organizations, and individuals who collectively will be responsible for implementing the Crisis Behavioral Center. The Health Department will provide oversight and I'm requesting a data analyst to assist us in that job.
Any questions from council? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on bill 13921. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed on 13921. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 13921 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Cannon-Ricki. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullion.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
And Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 13921 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number 138-21.
In order to appropriating monies from the American Rescue Plan Fund for the purposes herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, all items A through G on bill number 13821 were sent to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
I don't know if you're having everybody come up individually or not, Mr. President. I can give, is that what you'd like?
That's a pleasure to counsel.
I'm not sure if they were invited, let me put it that way, each of these departments.
Okay. Could you, would you speak to it then?
I'd be happy to summarize our meetings that we've had in the past. We've been meeting, as you know, as an ARP committee, a working group, for many months, and this is the fourth month of some of those recommendations that have come to you for appropriation requests. I'll summarize them briefly. The History Museum is asking for $25,000 for some assistance with broadband issues that they're having with that specific facility. Penn Township is asking for $75,000 to repair and replace equipment that was damaged during the pandemic. Madison Township similarly is asking for $50,000 for PPE, that was equipment that was damaged during the pandemic. Portage Manor is asking for $50,000 for a funding study to look at how to acquire additional funding from the state so that we can get that facility or a similar facility that will house those residents in a way that would maximize our dollars that come from the state of Indiana and the federal government. The Probate Court is asking for $150,000 for a feasibility study in a group home for independent living for those that have aged out of foster care. The Health Department is asking for, or well, actually, the commissioners are asking for $18,000 for a space study to look at moving the Health Department to a different building so that the Health Department could all be in one building together. And then finally, letter G is the first year of the crisis facility request by the Health Department and its partner agencies for both the remodeling of the facility and the first year of operations. Those are your items that have been sent to you with approval by yourselves for tonight's appropriation request.
Well, there you go. Any questions from council for Mr. Dalton?
That doesn't mean anything.
Hearing none, we'll open a public hearing on bill 13821. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Walker, J-E-F-F-W-A-L-K-E-R. I live at 4316 York Road in South Bend, Indiana. I'm also the executive director of the Beacon Community Resource Center out by the airport. I've been a member of faith in St. Joe County for about three years now, and as you can see, we've come out in full support of number G on this resolution. And I just want to say that we, back in 2019, in March of 2019, we convened a town hall meeting at Sinai Synagogue, and the theme that night was treatment, not incarceration. And our Sheriff Bill Redman was there, and he was advocating to reduce our jail population by 30% over the next three years. And soon after that, what came out of that meeting was that we developed a jail diversion task force to try to, you know, apprehend, if you will, this people being in our jail de facto treatment center, as we like to call it. And so this is a huge moment for the community tonight, that we're even here, that you guys are even voting on this bill, and we are tremendously grateful for Sheriff Bill Redman and Dr. Bob and the Health Department, and for many others that have just come together over the last three years to see this come to life. It's the culmination of a lot of work over the last three years, but it's certainly not the finish line. There's a whole lot of work to be done in the community, but I just want to say thank you for presenting this and moving this forward.
Thank you.
Rolanda Hughes, 1029 Riverside Drive, South Bend. I'm here to urge and affirm your support for the proposed Crisis Intervention Center here in St. Joseph County. It's a service that we desperately need in our community. I'm going to share with you the story of one friend who couldn't be here tonight as an illustration, an example of many such stories in our community. One Tuesday, in the middle of the night, I, again, this is a story not mine, but someone else's, was awakened from my sleep by noise in my basement. I was frightened and wanted to find out what was going on, only to find that my husband was talking to himself, smelling of alcohol and pacing back and forth with a gun in his hand. You see, my husband had been struggling for several years and was already concerned, and I was already concerned, but no one could have prepared me for what was going to happen or how our lives were going to change. That night, when I found my husband, he wasn't making any sense, but I could tell from what he was saying that he was angry with himself and filled with self-loathing. I was scared out of my mind and begged him to lie down and sleep for a while, but instead, my husband ran out of the house to his car and drove out into the night, armed, inebriated, and clearly out of his mind. I called 911 and asked for the police to help. Shortly after, they found my husband. They asked me to come to the scene, which I did. However, because my husband had not explicitly said that he was planning to harm himself or others, the police had no cause to hospitalize him against his will. So out of concern for his safety and the safety of others, the police arrested him. I want to be clear that the police did everything they could, and they did it well. They were kind, compassionate, and caring. They just had very limited options for what they could do in his situation. Unfortunately, all this did was delay the help that my husband so desperately needed. Eventually, five days later, he admitted himself into Eppworth, but because he had been arrested, he also faced court costs, lawyer fees, probation, and community service, all for a situation that he could not understand and really doesn't even remember. Funding, the Crisis Response Center will provide the police with an alternative to taking people to jail, and more importantly, it will give individuals and their families in crisis the help that they so desperately need, because people should not be punished for being sick. Police should have alternatives, and families like mine should know that their loved ones can and will be safe in their most desperate moments. Thank you very much for your support for this.
Thank you.
My name is Gilbert Washington. I'm pastor of St. Paul Bethel Missionary Baptist Church and a charter member of faith in St. Joe County. I reside at 135 North Hawthorne Drive, South Bend, Indiana. President Abraham Lincoln once said, "The taxes are the price that we pay for a civilized society." This Crisis Intervention Center is long overdue. It is needed, it is desired, and we are here tonight as a witness to the service of this center in our city and in our county. I'm going to ask that those members of, members and friends of faith in Indiana would stand, rise, and witness for five seconds. We want to thank our public servants for their fine service in this matter. Thank you again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of bill 13821?
My name's Clara Ross, 726 Cushing Street. I have organization called Home for Tracy, and this is very needed, as two weeks ago, I had to go to Weather Amnesty to pick up a lady who had been dropped off by the police. Unfortunately, because of her mental illness, there was nowhere for her to go. She had been trespassed from Memorial Hospital, in which my agency had to house her for a whole week, in which, because of her mental illness and the situation, I could no longer keep her there. And now, currently, as we speak, she's back into the county jail because of, there was no place for her to go or no services available for her. So this is very much needed as evidence of what I'm telling you happened right now.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, up close to public hearing on 13821. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 13821 was made by Councilman Nolan and Councilman Cannon-Ricki simultaneously, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullion.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 13821 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please? Clerk, will you please read the next bill under land use, bill number 12821?
There's the exciting one coming up. In order to vacate a public way or a public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County Public Way or Public Way located in portions of Pierce Street, Eloise Avenue, Lucille Avenue, Charles Avenue, Keller Street, and Lynn Street within Lincoln Highlands addition, petitioner Mike Daigle.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number 128-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Sean Klein, area plan commission staff with offices on the 11th floor of this building. This is a petition from the St. Joseph Airport Authority to vacate six public street right-of-ways within the Lincoln Highland subdivision at the northeast corner of Mayflower and Lincolnway. These streets are unimproved. All of the adjacent lots are owned by the Airport Authority, and given their close proximity to the runway, they're really not suitable for any sort of future development which could be served by these public right-of-ways. Consequently, staff recommends approval of the vacation, and I believe that there is a representative of the petitioner on the Zoom call today.
Thank you very much. Any questions for area plan? Petitioner?
Jennifer, can you get back to the Zoom? Can you go back to the Zoom real quick? Sorry.
Is it Mitch?
Mitch? Is Mitch on there?
He is muted. Unleash Mitch. Yes.
He's muted, though.
I believe he's muted.
Mitch, could you please unmute yourself?
Can you unmute yourself, Mitch?
Could you go get your grandson to do it for you?
I'm here, thank you.
Oh, wonderful.
You woke me up. I'm here on behalf of St. Joseph County Airport Authority. This is a request for a Steve vacation. This is at the south end of the north-south runway. This has been, it's just part of our cleaning up of the maps at the airport in furtherance of our master plan.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on 12821. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 12821. Do I hear a second? A first, I'm sorry? Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number 12821 was made by Councilman Katanzerite. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on 12821? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File.
Aye.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tullion.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 12821 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Bill, under miscellaneous, bill number 12721 was withdrawn at the request of the petitioner. Under unfinished business, we have bill number 6521. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Gladly. In order to vacate a public way or a public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County Public Way or Public Place located at that 735 segment of Nikar Road, the center line of which is the north line of the southeast quarter of section 20, Township 36, North Range 3 East, beginning at the northwest corner of the southeast quarter of said section and extending 735 feet east along the north line of the southeast quarter, section 20, Township 36, Range 3 East. Petitioner RRG Farms.
Mr. Augustino.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Peter J. Augustino, attorney-at-law with offices at 131 South Taylor Street. If my may approach and hand you a document.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. At least they're not here.
What the other one?
It's embarrassing. God, yeah. Jesus. You wouldn't leave us out. All right.
So I'm not going to belabor points here. We've already had public hearing on this probably twice. We went through a mediation, as the council had requested, to see if the parties can work out an agreement. What you have before you is the last version of agreement. We had a mediation on November 29 with mediator Chris Potts. We continued discussions after that, and I just want to review this agreement here with you quickly. Page one contains certain recitals that basically provide background. I think you're already familiar with that. My client's asking for a vacation of 735 feet of segment of Nikar Road. If we go to page two, under terms, the operative language, the key language, is the permission to allow the use of the portion of the road that we're asking to be vacated. There is no time limit on this. I know that was a point of discussion in the past. We're not limiting this to any specific time period. This is for a use that was consistent with farming done by Clyde James immediately prior to the vacation of the road. My clients are consenting for that use to continue. It's not restricted. My client, under section two, is agreeing to maintain this to allow access. The consent does expire if the farming use ends. And then it's governed under Indiana law. If you go to page three, the parties agree to respect each other, and the parties agree to seek informal resolution if they have disputes about this before going to court. My client is prepared to sign this agreement. Mr. Nussbaum, who represents Clyde James, indicated to me via email that he is reviewing this with his client. I do not have a report from him as to whether or not his client is agreeing to sign this. So I'm going to leave it in your fine discretion to decide what you wish to do. If you want to consider this at a special meeting at your next committee meeting, if you want to proceed, if you don't want to proceed. But we've done everything that we can within our power to try and produce an agreement, which is what you asked us to do. We're not trying to keep Clyde James or his wife from using the portion that's being vacated. We're willing to commit to it in writing. You have the agreement there before you. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Krasinski.
Mr. Augustino, did Mr. Nussbaum give you a timetable when he was going to get back to you, or no?
He's out of, he's out of town, traveling. I was told he would either try to call me this afternoon or tomorrow, so I don't know. And he's been working very hard with me to try to produce an agreement, so I don't think he's being evasive in any way. I just think that there's lots of other things that are happening in the meantime on his schedule and mine as well.
Is there any real problem? Give him another two weeks to get this matter solved that way?
Not from our end, if that's your desire.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Thank you. Mr. Augustino, top page two here says James has withdrawn his objection to the petition to vacate. Did that actually happen, or?
If he signs this agreement, if he signs this agreement, he has. But I don't, I don't have a signed agreement from him yet.
Has he expressed that in any way to you, to your knowledge, or through his attorney?
The, all I can tell you is that Mr. Nussbaum reported me today is that he's reviewing this, his clients are reviewing it. They're looking at it closely. So I can't tell you anything more than that.
Mr. Tullian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Augustino, it sounds like you've moved heaven and earth to get these parties as close as they are. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
It was my understanding that one of the hangups was that your clients wanted to put up a gate that they could lock at will and keep the other party out. Does your mediated agreement address the gate or the lock?
That has really not been a topic of discussion or something that I think has come up as an issue at all, whether from my client or from the other side in terms of trying to put up a gate. I don't see that as being an issue or an objective of my client's.
Thank you. I recommend the idea of giving it two more weeks and remaining in that, at the end of that two weeks, we expect to resolve this matter.
Alternatively, I'd like to make a motion, leave it on the table. Yeah, send it back to committee.
I'll second that.
It'll come back in a month.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to take it back to committee, and we'll hear it in a month. All in favor of that motion? Mr. Tullian?
Are we bumping into any deadlines, or if we don't act on something, it gets approved automatically?
Not for a vacation.
I think it can sit with the council for up to a year.
It's been a year, hasn't it?
Feels like it's been 10 years, but... I don't know if Councilman Root is online. He knows the rules as good as anyone.
With the James, it's been decades.
I believe that applies, that applies to a special use. Is this a special use?
No.
Usually doesn't apply to zoning, so.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Back to committee.
Merry Christmas.
Next on the agenda is new business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes on items not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening. Deborah Doral, 21677, Otten Road, South Bend, 46628. Thank you for your work tonight. I would just like to offer something for us to think about. This is our blessed world, and to our listening ears, all nature sings and round us rings, the music of the spheres. This is our lovely world. I rest me in the thought of rocks and trees, of skies and seas, creations' wonders wrought. This is our precious world. Oh, let us ne'er forget that through the wrongs seemed oft so strong, goodness is the ruler yet. This is our fragile world. Our stewards are not done. Love survives. Hope has not died. For all on earth to live and thrive as one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Brett Davis. I'm with the St. Joe County Health Department. I'm also on Alt-Gelt Street in South Bend. I'd like to express my disappointment in the removal of the paid parental leave policy from tonight's agenda. This policy is long overdue, and relegating it to the backburner and allowing it to move along at the unfortunately slow typical speed of government is depressing. You've been shown the fact-
Sir, I'm sorry. I can't hardly hear you.
I'm sorry. Brett Davis, St. Joe County Health Department. I'm also on Alt-Gelt Street in South Bend.
Yeah, please slow down so we can hear you better, okay?
I'll do my best. I'm disappointed in the removal of the paid parental leave policy from tonight's agenda. It's a policy that is long overdue, and relegating it to the backburner and letting it move along at the typical slow speed of government is depressing. You've been shown the facts and figures that it's a policy with enormous benefits for health and well-being, and so I'm not going to go into that. I'd rather address some of the non-health aspects. I know some of you have concerns about the fiscal impact, but at the end of the day, there's not really much of one. During the committee meeting, it was argued that this policy would be too costly, yet when pressed for elaboration, there wasn't really anything to back that up. It was also argued that this would affect only a small amount of employees, which is true. So if there even was a fiscal impact, it would not be very big. But addressing the finances, by writing into employee salary into the county budget, you've committed to paying them for 52 weeks a year. The employee is not in the office for 12 weeks due to starting a family. You're not suddenly paying them more. And regarding expenses for covering when the employee is off, we have to do that under FMLA anyway, and so as a manager within the department, it's kind of upsetting that you don't have faith in me to adequately plan for that. So I was, I'm also a manager that oversaw an employee who had a wife that went through a difficult pregnancy and birth last year, and he had to come back to work early to make ends meet, and that's not actually all that beneficial. When your mind is so focused on your struggling wife, newborn child, and the fact that they are an hour away from where you currently are, are you going to be very efficient in your work? And so one argument about this policy was that we should be paid more, which we really should. I don't know if you recall, but I spoke before you in 2018 about the low salaries of the average health inspector, which was 77th of 87 in Indiana at that time. In the three years since, it's still in the bottom half of the state of Indiana, and at 1% to 3% pay raises a year, like is, like had been suggested, I'm not going to hold, I'm not going to wait with bated breath for those, for a great bump in salary. And so the alternative is short-term disability, which is $250 a week, or about $6.67 an hour. That's not, less than minimum wage is not a great way to start out a new family. So as I stated earlier, it's a bad idea to let this move along slowly. If you wait six months to hear back from HR, you're going to need another job fair, and it's going to be twice as big as the last one you had. I'm not from this area. I'm from downstate Illinois. I don't have any ties to this area. I just married a beautiful wife who's also not from this area. I work hard. I'm a good employee, and I'm not, and I, I don't really have a good reason to pledge my allegiance to St. Joe County currently. Thank you for considering it.
Thank you, sir. But for future reference, sir, privilege of the floor is for items that are not on tonight's agenda, and this one was, but we appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? This meeting's adjourned.